Larry, it looks like we're ready to go.
Okay, yes, now I see all the stuff where it's supposed to be. Pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, including Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum being physically present in any one location. On March 17, 2020, I issued a declaration of emergency pursuant to the authority granted by the Village Code, the Illinois Municipal Code, and the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act to address the health threat posed by COVID-19 and its pandemic. On June 15, 2020, I executed a written determination that, given the ongoing emergency associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. On June 26, 2020, Governor Pritzker issued a new disaster proclamation and executive order 2020-43 that declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 50 people at the regular public meeting location to be infeasible in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, as amended by Public Act 101-0640. In accordance with the Governor's disaster proclamation, my declaration of emergency, and my recent determination regarding meetings of the Village Board of Trustees, I, as Village President of the Village of Glencoe, hereby determine that in-person public meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. Accordingly, this Committee of the Whole is being conducted virtually, with members participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village Manager Corrali is in the boardroom, as required by the Open Meetings Act. Village Manager Corrali, may I have a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mr. President. Trustee Hallwax. Trustee Hallwax, I think you need to unmute. All right, we'll keep going, and hopefully he can unmute. Trustee Listener?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Here.
Trustee Ruben?
Here.
Trustee Vrie? President Levin?
Here.
And Steve, Trustee Hallwax is having a hard time unmuting his phone, but he is a participant on that phone number down below. Can we note that for the record, does he have to speak?
Well, we need to be able to hear him if he wants to vote.
Now we can hear you. There you are, Joe.
Sorry, I did the star six. I'm here. Apologies for the delay.
You're good. Thank you. We have a quorum, President Levin.
Thank you. To facilitate this meeting, I ask each member of the Village Board and staff to mute your lines if you are not speaking and unmute your line when you speak to help minimize background noise. Members of the public are muted and should remain muted during the meeting. Members of the public may not share their videos. All right, in accordance with the supplemental rule the Board approved on April 16, 2020, here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I will ask management analyst Deputy Clerk Jordan Lester to read the public comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in compliance with the instructions that were previously published with the meeting materials. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencomeeting, that's singular, at villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. Management Analyst Lester, please read any public comments that have been submitted.
Thank you, President Levin. We received one public comment in advance of this evening from Mr. Jay Schmeele, and this is in regards to the village's 2020 pilot sidewalk snow removal program. And he asked a variety of questions. Question number one, "The proposed routes merely seem to be based upon village staff opinions with a vague reference to the active transportation plan. Are these proposed routes supported by actual sidewalk usage data? Are these data available to residents?" Number two, "How is it sufficient to focus on school routes if a child needs to walk in the street to get to a school route because the sidewalks near the child's home are not plowed?" Number three, "Having just spent $1.3 million for primarily cosmetic enhancements to tour court, why is the Village Board seeking to save a mere $11,030 per year on sidewalk snow plowing at the expense of pedestrian safety? Are decorative planners really more important than resident safety?" Number four, "On the streets which will not have plowed sidewalks, will the village paint pedestrian lanes in the street similar to the bike lanes on Sheridan and Green Bay roads? Isn't Glencoe pedestrian safety as important as the safety of bicyclists who ignore traffic laws while racing through Glencoe?" Number five, "On the streets which will not have plowed sidewalks, will the village intensify the street lighting so that motorists can better see the pedestrians walking in the street or reaching down to the street to clean up after their dog during the dark winter months?" Number six, "How can the village justify plowing sidewalks next to the entire length of the uninhabited forest preserve at the north end of Green Bay Road while not plowing sidewalks adjacent to the residences where Glencoe taxpayers actually live?" Number seven, "The video for the water meter replacement program touts the reduced carbon footprint resulting from the elimination of the driving necessary to read the old water meters. What about the increased carbon footprint caused by residents driving to the library, the post office, or downtown businesses instead of walking because their sidewalks are impassable?" Number eight, "Don't all residents pay the property taxes that are used to fund sidewalk snow removal? How can the Village Board let the staff decide which resident taxpayer sidewalks receive plowing and which do not?" What's next? Will some taxpaying residents have access to village water and sewers and others will not? Will public safety only respond to emergencies in some locations and not others? And that is his last question respectfully submitted, Jay Schmeele. And President Levin, that was the only public comment we received in advance of tonight's meeting.
Okay.
President Levin, if I might, we do have a report on this subject. Dave Mao is teed up to give it during the Village Board meeting. That begins at 7:00 during the Village Manager's report. I think it will actually address a number of the comments from Mr. Schmeele.
Correct. And in fact, the Board has actually previously, in its discussions, addressed all the comments from Mr. Steele, including clarifying things that he apparently did not understand, such as why we're talking about this having nothing to do with the cost of plowing. But I think it's best that we defer responding to those comments until the public meeting, and we take it in its regular order. So I would request Mr. Steele watch that portion of the meeting tonight so that he can hear the responses. The item before us that is the main public item on the Committee of the Whole tonight is a discussion regarding winter outdoor dining concepts. And with respect to that, I would request that Assistant Village Manager Sharon Tanner, Development Service Manager Taylor Baxter, and Management Analyst Deputy Clerk Jordan Lester lead us through the presentation on that subject. The floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you very much, President Levin, and good evening, members of the Board and to those who are joining our meeting. Hard to believe that on a beautiful day like today, we're talking about winter, but here we are. As we've started to prepare for the possibility that indoor dining restrictions may continue into the winter months, our staff has been in contact with our local restaurants to talk about ideas and options for potentially offering outdoor seating capability in the wintertime in a way that's comfortable and safe for restaurant patrons. So this evening, we'd like to share with you an overview of several requests that have been brought forth by members of the restaurant community and staff's recommendation to consider advancing those requests. By way of background, as I had mentioned, we fully expect that indoor dining restrictions may continue into the summertime. And so as we had conversations with our restaurants, there were some creative ideas that emerged from the restaurant community and some strong partnership among our restaurants to talk about how outdoor dining may be accommodated in the cold weather. Some of the takeaways from those conversations that I'd like to share as context for our discussion is that there's a strong shared interest in supporting the viability of our local restaurants. That interest is shared by, obviously, the restaurants themselves, patrons of the restaurants, and the village itself. So we all have an interest in restaurants continuing to serve their customers in a safe and positive manner. Another takeaway that we learned is that, from the restaurant's perspective, distance from the kitchen to the seating area is key, and especially so in the wintertime when the temperatures are going to cause food items to become cold faster and servers are traveling a greater distance, perhaps in different weather conditions, if it happens to be snowing that day, for example. With that in mind, the Village Court lot feasibility, we found, was feasible dependent on location of the restaurant. Currently, it's being utilized by Valor, which is immediately adjacent to the Village Court lot. But as we found in the summertime, that option did not pan out for Guild Hall or from some of our other restaurants where the distance was just too great. As we think about the winter months, there are a number of summer outdoor dining and outdoor seating options that simply aren't viable in the wintertime. For example, Guild Hall and Mags have been able to utilize extended sidewalk seating with their tables outside. However, in the wintertime, having uncovered tables outdoors is probably not going to be very comfortable for dining patrons. So that option is not feasible. Last, one of the takeaways is that, among the restaurant community and among, I think, all involved, there's a shared desire to minimize the loss of downtown parking spaces. We are all interested in keeping options available that provide as much parking for our downtown business customers to continue supporting all of the businesses in the downtown. And so with that, I'd like to walk through some of the requests that have been shared by members of our downtown restaurant community. By way of background, we either spoke with or attempted to make contact with all of our restaurants in town. And the three requests that we're sharing with you this evening are the product of those discussions. Some of the faster-service restaurants or more casual restaurants sound like not opting to provide outdoor seating. And so we're going to focus on the three requests that we have here this evening. Guild Hall and Valor indicated similar interests, so we'll talk about them together, although there may be some variances in how they construct their operations. Both have indicated a desire to use a few parking spaces, likely three or four or so, in front of the restaurant with concrete barriers around that area to separate it from vehicular traffic on the street. And in that area, they'd like to place greenhouses or perhaps igloos, similar to what Hometown had in the wintertime, to accommodate individual tables for up to six guests. Hometown Coffee &amp; Juice is interested in a concept that involves placing greenhouses on the sidewalk of Vernon Avenue, very similar to the igloos that they had, but square and different sizes. Similar to the igloos that they had last year, I should say. And Hometown is also interested in extending their awning and adding a heating element to it to provide some additional outdoor seating capacity. I will note that on the Board's agenda for the 7:00 p.m. meeting, there is a licensing agreement that the Board is being asked to consider with Hometown that would allow them to move forward with the concept that we'll discuss here in just a moment. Okay, so we'll share some of the draft renderings that Guild Hall created. These are meant to be concepts. They're drafts. They are not final. But they are intended to illustrate the request so we can bring it to life a bit. So to orient everyone, here we are on Vernon Avenue with the Guild Hall Restaurant space, the sidewalk, and four parking spaces in front of the restaurant. The gray shaded area indicates that that area would potentially be closed with some concrete barriers established around the perimeter of that area. Adding a bit of detail to this image, you can see the boxes that are within and overlapping that gray area are the greenhouse structures that I mentioned just a moment ago. Guild Hall is considering the option of adding a platform that would level the surface of the dining area with the sidewalk so that there's not a height differential. As you can see, even with the greenhouses potentially overlapping onto the sidewalk a bit, there is a minimum of six feet pedestrian clearance that's maintained in this schematic. And this is a visual rendering to provide yet some more detail as to how this might look. Again, this is meant to be a concept. And Guild Hall is interested in being flexible and considering different sizes, whether perhaps six-by-six greenhouses or six-by-eight greenhouses or a combination of the two sizes. Again, this is meant as a draft for illustrative purposes. Moving to Hometown, this is an aerial view of their site plan that they're proposing. So to orient ourselves, we have Hometown Coffee here in this tan-colored shape, Vernon Avenue running north-south, and Park Avenue east-to-west. Hometown is proposing placement of six greenhouses along the sidewalk. And as the Board is likely aware, the sidewalk in this section of Vernon Avenue is quite wide. It's approximately 24 feet wide. And so there is sufficient area to place the greenhouses while accommodating pedestrian access and having a bit of a gap between the curb and the edge of the greenhouse. So here to the right, we have the six greenhouses. And the red rectangles that are immediately adjacent to the building are intended to be the extended awnings that would have heating elements to provide additional outdoor seating. Again, this evening, at the 7:00 p.m. full Village Board meeting, the Board will be asked to consider a licensing agreement with Hometown that would allow them to utilize the village's right-of-way for this plan. And so to summarize, staff is recommending that the Village Board consider authorizing staff to move forward with implementing the concepts that have been requested by the restaurants. And to do so, we would prepare licensing agreements with restaurants that are interested in moving forward. The parking spaces concept, we believe, is an appropriate option for the wintertime. Some of the things that have changed since the summertime, when the Board first discussed a concept like this, is that we've had some additional passage of time. We've had opportunities to learn about other dining programs that have been utilized throughout the country, to learn about best practices, and to spend some more time on the design. Unfortunately, in the summertime, we were all sprinting toward trying to implement a program as the restrictions were changed by the state with regards to dining and which phase of the Restore Illinois Plan we were in at the time. We believe that this option is the best available for winter conditions because it allows for covered seating that can be offered outdoors with heating and lighting elements to provide a comfortable space for restaurant patrons. We've spoken with the restaurants about impacts to snow and ice control operations, and we believe that the village's snow and ice control operations on the streets will be minimally impacted. And we would seek partnership with the restaurants to remove snow in the actual dining areas. And the restaurants have been agreeable to that. Last, we believe that use of concrete barriers with reflectors to shield the dining area provides adequate separation from the vehicular traffic on Vernon Avenue. So again, to summarize, our recommendation is that the Board discuss these concepts. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. And if the Board is interested in pursuing these options, we would recommend directing staff to begin developing license agreements with the restaurants that have requested to engage in winter outdoor dining. We would certainly consider other requests, if any, were submitted by restaurants. However, to date, we've not heard from restaurants, other than the three we've discussed this evening. This evening, we do have representatives from Guild Hall and from Hometown who are attending the meeting, and staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have. And if there are any of the questions that the Board has specifically for Guild Hall or Hometown, we can arrange for them to answer those questions for you as well.
All right. Let's start with going down the list of trustees to see if there are any questions or thoughts, starting with Joe Hallwax. Any questions or comments, Joe?
No, thank you, President Levin. I am supportive of giving as much latitude to the Glencoe restaurants to continue to produce or to survive this fall with as much support as we can give them. So no questions from me.
Thank you, Joe. Gail, Listener, any comments or questions?
I think the site plans were very attractive. They look like very interesting options. What I'm just wondering about, I always have my health concerns. I worry about ventilation. And also, how the state is viewing these greenhouses and igloos. Have they taken a position of what they feel about them and if they have any plans to regulate them?
That's a great question. Trustee Listener, we've not heard of any position that the state has taken. We'll certainly monitor that, and if need be, adjust. However, we're not aware of any position at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Trustee Barbara Miller, any comments or suggestions?
Yes, well, I'm thrilled that everybody is working together, coming up with these great creative solutions. I think it benefits even people who are not using these restaurants just because it livens up the downtown area, and I think we all appreciate that. So I certainly want to do whatever we can to support this. So I do have a couple of questions. One of them is to better understand, maybe it's related to Trustee Listener's ventilation question, but I'm trying to understand how these spaces will be cleaned. I understand there's some sort of a way of cleaning them in between sets of patrons. How will that be done between every set of patrons, and how does that work exactly? And then, in case it's the same person who would be answering my next question, it looked tightly on the Vernon side of Hometown, I'm sorry, on the Park side of Hometown and on Vernon with Guild Hall in terms of pedestrians who just want to be walking by. I know that Assistant Manager Tanner said that there is six feet. I just wanted to make sure that that's been addressed so that people aren't necessarily having to just squeeze by there. And there are many people who feel uncomfortable even when they're outside and even when it's a brief interaction. So I want to address those issues as possible.
Sharon, if I can suggest, we may want to respond to the second question, but it probably would be best to have either representatives from both Guild Hall and Hometown Coffee to respond to how they plan to clean and ventilate these spaces. We do have Lou Ruben from Hometown Coffee and Jeff Shapik and Jennifer Littowitz from Guild Hall who are able to speak to those points. Trustee Miller.
Okay, I've unmuted. Jeff, Jennifer, and Lou, you have capability to unmute your line. So if you would like to weigh in on the cleaning procedures or the ventilation or any of the other questions, please do feel free. You just need to unmute your line.
Can you hear me? This is Lou Ruben.
Yes.
Hello, everybody. So with respect to the question about cleaning them, our plan would be to not let people in without being, we would regulate people going in and out of there. The sanitation part, with the igloo, it was a softer plastic. This would be a polycarbonate material that would be harder. In either case, you can clean them the same way. We are going to use, it's like a fogger that sanitizes it entirely. I think visually, it's appealing to people just to see that you're really doing a deep cleaning. And that would be in addition to wiping it down in between each use. In addition to that, there would be ventilation because, with our approach, at least at this point, the plan is to have these custom-built so that we can have it designed in a way that's got proper ventilation, so the door can slide open or crack open. And I believe there can also be a vent on any of the panels so that you can even get a cross breeze if necessary. They have these that are made off the shelf as well. And they frankly might be as good of an option, but I haven't seen one in person yet. And they offer the same thing. You can slide the door open. You can ventilate it from either side. So I think the important thing is you have to be able to not let people just go in there on their own. You have to lead them in there and then absolutely clean it very well after. People are going to care deeply about that.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, do you have any thoughts?
It's Jeff Shapak speaking. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Lou Ruben, Jennifer and I have been speaking, well, Jennifer and I have been speaking about this a lot. And Lou Ruben and we have been speaking about it a lot. And Lou has been very generous in that he started the process earlier than we did after his experience working with the Board on his igloos. And he started sharing a lot of the information he was finding. We started sharing some information we were seeing in the city of Chicago as it related to the greenhouses as well. We had had some calls with Phil Corrali and the staff of the Village of Glencoe. And we also agreed that we would follow identical protocols as Louis was proposing just now to make it much easier and consistent in the village. In fact, I think Lou even found the fogger, sent us the link to it. I believe the village staff had seen it as well online, if not, maybe even saw one live. But that we would intentionally follow the same types of protocols so that way the entire community at large would feel very comfortable with this concept of having greenhouses in downtown Glencoe. So from a cleaning standpoint, we'll follow suit. As it relates to the actual design of the greenhouses, there are standard ones. You can build them custom as well. We are doing significant research on those two options, as is Lou, and sharing information back and forth with Lou. But the answer to the question about ventilation is, yes, the doors can open, remain ajar, slide open, and/or the panels that are on an angle, sort of the rooftop, those can prop open as well in order to add ventilation and a cross breeze.
Thank you.
And Trustee Miller, to your comment relative to maintaining the six feet of spacing, that is something that we have worked closely, particularly with Lou Ruben at Hometown on the Park Avenue side. There were a few different design iterations that were reviewed. And the one that is before you does maintain that six feet of sidewalk space. Sidewalks are just a little more than 12 feet wide in that location.
To clarify, the back, let's just say, the back of the chair of the patron, behind that, there's six feet to the curb. Is that what you're saying?
That is our understanding, yeah. The tables are going to be pushed up against the windows so there's as much space as possible.
Okay, right, all right. That makes sense. If the tables are up against the building, then it seems possible. Because I walked by there, and I just couldn't picture how there would be enough space for pedestrians. Okay, thank you. That helped.
All right. Peter Mulvaney, any... Peter Mulvaney, any comments or questions?
Sure. Well, first off, I like trustee Hallwack and others, fully support the encouragement of advancing our businesses downtown. A quick question or concern is that we not only think about restaurants, but our other businesses as well. I know we have developed a good rapport here with the restaurants, but there may be other businesses that can benefit from this type of action. And I want to make sure we are not exclusive unless there's a reason why this is only for restaurants. The other comments I have, a similar concern about making sure we do maintain that public right of way, the sidewalk needs to be a safe place and make sure that we're not forcing pedestrians to squeeze themselves through to feel comfortable. Another comment is the concrete wall that I have no concern, problem with, except that I would encourage us to think of a creative way to make them a non-construction zone, some sort of artistic competition or mural artist to help that concrete wall look attractive and complimentary, but not necessarily advertising the business names. I think it would be a nice way to just leverage that sort of half lane. Otherwise, I'm curious and eager to help and see how this can progress and hopefully encourage more business and more patrons downtown.
Thank you, Peter. Gary Rubin, any comments or questions?
As with the other trustees, I'm fully in favor of supporting our local businesses, our local restaurants. So, you know, I'm all in favor of this. It seems very well thought out. I do want to make sure that the sidewalk is cleared, but it seems that is being looked at closely. I'm sure will be well addressed in the final plan. Actually, the one substantive comment, if it's even that, is that in reading the license form to be looked at at our next meeting in 25 minutes, I believe it starts in the middle of November. And it occurs to me that this is Chicago. And we often have inclement weather, colder weather, much earlier than that. Is there any particular reason why we're waiting so long to provide these kinds of licenses to support the businesses if we have a particularly cold October?
Trustee Rubin, I'll start that and staff can jump in. I think to some degree that was a starting point from last year with our discussions with Hometown. Our outdoor seating permits, as they exist right now, do go through November 30th. And so we do anticipate there may be some overlap. There's also a significant lead time that we're anticipating in terms of the construction process and the ordering of these pieces of equipment. So those could be, it could be six to eight weeks until they're even ready to be utilized and in place. So we certainly are open-minded to a start date. That is, that again, as I said, was a carryover from our discussions with them last year. But I think we can work closely with them. And if there's flexibility from the board's standpoint, when you consider that licensing agreement later this evening, you certainly could make an amendment to it before it's voted on, if you so choose.
Let me, on behalf of the board, in terms of the question that staff put to us, say that I think that it's fair to say that we all are very enthusiastic about anything that will help our restaurants through this season, including starting as early as possible so that they can get these in and be ready and be able to provide cash flow for their continued excellent services to our residents. So I think our response is full speed ahead. With that...
And if I, I wanted to just address one of trustee Mulvaney's points. I didn't want it to go unaddressed. Certainly agree from the standpoint of applying a fairness standard to our other businesses in the downtown. We have been communicating with them on a number of different levels and hoping to partner with particularly our retailers this fall and winter on some programmatic things that they may be doing. It's probably a little difficult from a retail standpoint to utilize outdoor spaces. And there are a few different operational issues at play with that. But certainly appreciate your point and we will continue to work closely with all of the business community downtown and elsewhere.
Thank you. Management analyst, are there any public comments that were received during our meeting?
President Levin, no, we did not receive any additional public comment.
Sorry, could I interrupt before moving on? There was one other comment that occurred to me regarding the restaurants. And that's ADA compliance, especially with Guildhall with that curb. And I just want to make sure that we are properly applying ADA compliance in any of these notions. Just hadn't come up. I thought we should make sure it's on the table, doesn't get overlooked.
A great point. And yes, that's certainly something that as we analyze a more formal permit application from them, we would review that as a component. In our conversations with them, the platforming actually does support ADA accessibility so there isn't a lip or a curb that needs to be addressed to get to these seating areas. And so we will keep an eye on that when we have a final permit application from them.
Thank you, Peter. Our next order of business is really to move into closed session for a few moments. So I would request a motion for us to move into closed session for purposes of discussing under the Illinois Open Meetings Act, Section 2C11, pending litigation. Could I have a motion to... Mulvaney, second.
Second, Hallwack.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Hallwack.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
All right. Steve, do you want to briefly explain what everyone needs to do next?
I previously sent you the link to the Zoom meeting. It is a separate one than one you're on now. Exit this and join us in a moment using my link. Bye.
Thank you. And we'll come back to this after the closed session is over.
Phil, I don't know if you can still hear, are we going to have a few minutes right now since the other meeting doesn't start till seven?
Barbara, this is Jordan.
Yes, we do. Sorry, I was at the other side of the boardroom, but yes, we do.
That was a good sprint. Thank you. Okay.
Hey Steve, how are you enjoying your business?
Knock on wood, so far so good. Peter, thank you for asking. It's going great. I'm here, I'm here at my office right now.
Okay. Get in with cheap rent, or did you get, have to get your space before the prices have fallen?
Um, we actually cut a good deal even before the prices have fallen, but renewal will be great, with just a one-year lease. With the Glencoe residential, I hope he's not watching. As our landlord. Wonderful landlord.
So with all the stuff that's going on, are we, or is your office actually having lawyers regularly downtown at this point?
Completely voluntary, optional. But many do come in, not enough to be concerned from a health hazard standpoint, but we're completely flexible.
Excellent.
But support staff. Are you finding support staff come in too?
They do, but we've equipped all of them so that they can work at home or remotely. So they have their option as well. I'm the only one that uses the Eagle River office, though.
You have access to that good Wisconsin fishing.
I, yeah.
You're hooked on the Eagle River office. I haven't seen Jonathan Bree yet. Do we know where he is?
I haven't seen him yet either. I'm guessing he's running a little bit late. I think Barbara was going to step away for just a second, so she should be back in a moment too. Oh, she's back.
Shall we get started?
Yeah, President Levin, why don't you go ahead and get started? You've got such a long preface to read through. We certainly can, can get going with that.
Let me start by saying that the board voted to close the closed session that we were having from the committee of the whole meeting, and to return back into public session, and they authorized me to close the committee of the whole meeting, which I'm officially doing. And now we're getting, we're initiating the process for our regular meeting. Assistant, let me go through, and there's, under the law, there's a whole preface before we actually begin the meeting, which I want to go through. Pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, included in Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. On March 17th, 2020, I issued a declaration of emergency pursuant to the authority granted by the Village Code, the Illinois Municipal Code, and the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act to address the health threat posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. On June 15th, 2020, I executed a written determination that, given the ongoing emergency associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. On June 26th, 2020, Governor Pritzker issued a new disaster proclamation in executive order 2020-43. That declaration, in person, that declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 50 people at the regular public meeting location to be infeasible in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, as amended by Public Act 101-0640. In accordance with the governor's disaster proclamation, my declaration of emergency, and my recent determination regarding meetings of the Board of Trustees, I, as village president, hereby determine that in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. Accordingly, this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees is being conducted virtually with members participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Phil Carraway is in the boardroom as required by law. May I have a roll call, please?
Certainly, trustee Hallwax. Just the Hallwax, you're still muted. Looks like you're unmuted now. Okay, thank you. Trustee listener.
Sorry.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Rubin. Trustee Rubin, you're muted.
Sorry, here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I ask each member of the Village Board and staff to mute your lines if you are not speaking to help minimize background noise. Members of the public are muted and should remain muted during the meeting. Members of the public should not share their videos. After each agenda item is presented, I will ask each trustee if they have any questions or comments. I will call the trustees in alphabetical order. As required by law, I will ask for a roll call rather than a voice vote on any agenda item requiring a vote. The first order of our business tonight is a request, my request for a motion to approve the minutes of our committee of the whole meeting of August 20th, 2020 at 5:30 PM, and our Board of Trustees' regular meeting on August 20th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Okay. In accordance with the supplemental rule, the board approved on April 16th, 2020, here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. Before I ask management analyst deputy clerk Jordan Lester to read the public comments on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting in compliance with the instructions that were previously published with the meeting materials, I wanted to mention that all comments received regarding the public hearing regarding the consideration of amendments to the Village of Glencoe's plan of operation and governance for its electric aggregation program will be read when that agenda item is discussed later in the meeting. Deputy Village Clerk Jordan, please now read into the record the public comments received on non-agenda items, if any.
Good evening, President Levin. We did not receive any public comments for tonight's Village Board meeting.
Thank you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencomeeting, that's singular, at villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. Our next order of business is committee reports. At our committee of the whole meeting this evening, we had a discussion of winter outdoor dining requests from our various restaurants and our work with merchants and restaurants with respect to how they can move forward during the winter months. The next report is from trustee Vrie on our finance committee meeting on Tuesday. Trustee Vrie, could you report on that?
We had our meeting on Tuesday, and we went over a variety of topics. The, what we do every month is just looking at the village finances from the previous month, and we are now seeing the effects of pandemic in revenues, where property taxes and state income tax are relatively in line, but we're seeing drops in sales tax, utility tax, and permits. They are, they're pretty dramatic for a couple of months. What we're also, though, seeing is the beginnings of a recovery, and some of those things are starting to come back. So hopefully we can continue to improve and the economy can continue to improve, because we are seeing a rebound, though we're still running under, under budget. And then we also, we went through the comprehensive annual financial report. We'll have our auditor present that in a little bit. And then we, we spent a lot of time on financial projections over the rest of this year, but then also over the next five years, where we've talked about this before, pension expenses are going way up, and we'll have to figure out, well, we'll have to deal with the pandemic and how long it lasts. At this point, we're projecting somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 to $650,000, a $650,000 drop in revenues for the year. Obviously, that's just an estimate, and we will be changing it or adjusting it as we move forward. But then we're also looking at the next several years and how we will manage significant capital expenses with various revenues and whether we'll need to issue support debt. So it was a, it was a meeting where we did a lot of numbers. Oh, and then we got to introduce the, our auditor. So I, I'd like to introduce Jamie Wilkie, who's a partner with Lauderbeck and Amen, and she is here to present our comprehensive annual financial report and management letter for the village with the fiscal, for the fiscal year ending February 29th, 2020.
Trustee Vrie, if you don't mind, I'd just like to introduce the topic quickly. Okay, so as trustee Vrie explained. So as trustee Vrie explained, I'm happy to report that we have completed our comprehensive annual financial report. That process starts with a full financial audit. This year was particularly challenging, as you can imagine, with the impacts of COVID-19. Our preliminary fieldwork was originally scheduled in March 25. And as you recall, village hall was closed down on March 17. So the majority of our, both our primary preliminary fieldwork and our final fieldwork were all completed remotely. So I would like to, to extend a special thank you to the finance staff. As this was not easy, we certainly found some efficiencies in our process as we worked through this. And hopefully, that will make us better going forward as we complete this process each year. As a result of going through fieldwork and compiling final adjusted numbers for the year, there's also a number of outputs that come out of this process. So we have several required filings that are required to occur. Typically, we do them all in August. We did have to request an extension on the comptroller's report this year just because of some of the delays that happened to all of, due to all of the remote work. So in addition to the comprehensive annual financial report, there's also the comptroller's report, a very in-depth State of Illinois Division of Insurance report. And those are reports on our two pension funds on the public safety side. There's an annual required debt disclosure. And as the board remembers, a popular annual financial report that will be coming forward for your acceptance in a future meeting as well. So now I'd like to turn this over to Jamie Wilkie, who is the partner on our audit.
Thank you, Nikki. Good evening. I'm also going to share a screen here. So I just want to make sure that everyone can see the PowerPoint that I've got up, right?
Yes.
So I would just like to reiterate thanks to the finance department. You know, with the February year end and fieldwork kind of happening right in the middle of really the beginning part of the pandemic, certainly, we had to switch gears very quickly to still try to get through all of our testing and in coordination with the staff internally. They are really an outstanding team. You know, I can't thank them enough for being flexible, you know, still very responsive as we needed requested items. So Nikki, thank you to you and the rest of the team. I would certainly be thrilled if you could pass along our thanks. So I do want to briefly start. I know the document, the CAFR itself, is a very large document. For you guys, it's about 150 pages to try to digest. Certainly, that's a lot of information to take in. So this evening, what I would like to do is really just highlight some of the key areas within the document. I've obviously given my thanks to the finance department, but it was really a successful audit from the standpoint of issuing what we call an unmodified or clean opinion. The village also was awarded, for last year's audit, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That is another independent review of the annual audited financial statements. And quite frankly, the highest level reporting that any government entity can have. So there is additional work and required schedules that are included in the village's audit to meet those criteria of the program. So again, just to extend my thanks to the staff for their efforts in, in helping to coordinate that information for the certificate program. We had no internal control findings. So as part of our audit process, we are required to assess the overall internal control environment. Certainly, this evening, we would have to bring forth to the board any areas of concern, red flags, issues with our testing. I'm happy to report this evening, we had no such findings. So truly a clean audit process this year. We also had no new management letter comments. So the management letter is really our opportunity once a year to highlight any best practice type issues, significant GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board pronouncements. So really a quieter year, which is great. You know, kind of timing with the pandemic of having a clean audit and really no findings or issues to report this evening. Touching based on some of the key highlights within the document, I just want to point out some of those sections that I think are always of interest to the board. The transmittal letter is on pages three through six of the document. These few pages will really highlight the local economy as well as initiatives and financial policies. So kind of that background information as you start reviewing the annual audited financial statements. You'll see page seven is a copy of that certificate of achievement award. Just wanted to point that out as well. As I stated, as part of the audit itself, we are required to assess the internal control environment. So that's kind of issue one as it relates to the purpose of the audit. The second piece is really the issuance of the actual opinion on the financial statement. So are the financial statements, in fact, materially correct? So we have issued what we call an unmodified opinion. That is the clean, highest level opinion that the village can receive. And you'll find that on pages eight and nine of the document. Pages 10 through 23 of the document will cover probably one of the most important sections of the entire report. That is what we call management's discussion and analysis. As the title indicates, this is, in fact, prepared by management internally and really does serve as the executive summary to the CAFR document. As I said, you guys have well over 150 pages. That's a lot of information to digest on an annual basis. Phil and Nikki and the rest of the staff have really done an outstanding job within this section of highlighting some of those key transactions, trends, comparisons to the prior year, discussions on capital asset investment and long-term debt activity. So really, in a short few pages, you can really get a nice kind of overview of the results for the fiscal year. The financial statements themselves are covered in pages 24 through 91 of the document. I was not going to go through those in detail this evening. I know there was a finance committee meeting earlier in the week to kind of handle some of the nitty-gritty discussion of the basic financial statements. But I did want to point out one last section to the board this evening, that being what we call the statistical section. You'll find that on pages 126 through 156 of the document. And I point this out to our board members typically because it provides a lot of historical information. So if you're curious what property tax rates looked like 10 and five years ago, or maybe the debt structure of the village, you know, over the last 10 years, in this section, you will really find a wealth of historical information. And I know most of our board members enjoy spending some time in the back part of that report. Certainly, I am happy to answer any questions. Just wanted to reiterate what a clean audit process, even in light of the circumstances this year. And again, extend our thanks to the staff for, for all of their efforts in preparing for the audit. I provided my contact info. If there's any follow-up questions, by all means, you guys have access to us at any point in time. But I'd be certainly happy to answer any questions for the board this evening as well.
Any questions for Amy? Jamie? No questions, Jamie?
Well, actually, Larry, this is Joe. Can I, I have one quick question. I'd like to understand, in a comparative sense, how many, when you're, when you're doing audits, what percent come out as clean? Say, let's assume that ours is on the right-hand side of the distribution curve in terms of being good. What is that in terms of with other clients that you've seen? How do we compare, I guess, relative to others? Is there, do you have any way to provide us some kind of guidance or data around that?
Sure. So actually, so a couple of ideas related to that. So as it relates to, you know, how well the village itself, the result of the audit, the fact that I can come forth this evening and say, one, we have a clean audit opinion; two, we have no internal control findings; three, we have no new management letter comments; and four, quite frankly, the ability of the staff internally to fully adjust the books before we come in. We typically don't have a lot of proposed adjusting journal entries. The staff really does an outstanding job preparing for the audit. To have all four of those components kind of working together is probably, quite frankly, not the norm for a lot of our clients. Typically, you know, we may have a handful of journal entries, maybe some management letter recommendations. So when I truly say it was a clean audit process, you know, in comparison to some of our other government entities, certainly, the village is, is right up at the top of the list. As it relates to maybe how you compare to some of your neighbors, et cetera, as far as, you know, kind of indicators, if that makes sense, we actually do issue to the village on an annual basis what we call a benchmarking type report. So we do periodically try to give that information back to staff. I can certainly coordinate that with Nikki and Phil to share that information. If it's not readily available, you know, we can certainly provide that information, which has a number of different, you know, key indicators that we can compare, you know, across all of our municipal clients.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Peter?
This is trustee Mulvaney. As usual, I'd like to know if our investment in our unified asset system has paid any dividends. And it sounds like it is. But I don't know if either Jamie or Nikki, you could respond to, you know, our use and our, the investment we've made in IT over the past few years. That may have helped us this year.
I can certainly say, I don't know how far you'd like me to go into detail, but it has significantly helped the automation of our monthly treasures report. There's, given the impact of COVID-19 and all the financial forecasting we've been doing, there is still a significant component of that that's manual. But we've been able to completely automate our bank reconciliation process and convert a lot of our records electronically. So from a financial reporting and tracking standpoint, we have been able to realize some efficiency there. I would anticipate that to continue as we just went live with utility billing. So that would have been kind of outside of the scope of this audit, because it's a little bit more recent. The other large component of this is tracking our fixed assets. That's all electronic in the new system. And that has helped automate the process as well. So we have been able to generate some significant efficiencies there.
Good. Thank you.
Peter, I would also mention that in terms of having studied, done this, and implemented, that we owe a tremendous amount of credit to Nikki for the job she's done in steering us through this modernization and update process. It is materially better than it was when this got started. She has done a phenomenal job of bringing us into the modern world and with great efficiency. Her ability to work with Lauterbeck, her ability to provide information to the board and to management to do it is night and day difference between the way it was, say, five years ago. So it's, it's been a tremendous help. And certainly, the investments we made have paid handsome dividends during this period where most other villages and things had tremendous problems because of the inability to have their village halls open in full functionality and that. So hopefully, that also would add to the knowledge of us on the board of what's happening.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, let us move on then to the plan commission. Trustee Miller, has the plan commission had any activities or meetings since we last met?
No, we have not. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 28. I think it is, the last Wednesday in October. So I will, I may not have anything to tell you even at our next meeting, because that will be before the October 28 meeting.
With time, that's just perfect.
Yes, yes. Maybe trustee Mulvaney will be happy to use my time.
All righty. Joe, can you tell us what's going on with the golf advisory committee and with Stella's work with the man upstairs to make sure we do great things during this fall season?
Yes, the, the golf advisory committee will meet on Monday. And so I'll be able to update that, that meeting at the next village hall, village meeting. However, I do have some stats that Stella provided that I can read for the board. And the, again, repeating the theme of fantastic weather, fantastic course, taking, taking the, the advantages we have by having Northbrook closed and, and having just a resurgence in golf. Everything about this report is going to be very positive. So August had record-breaking numbers. The daily average rounds was 277. So for, for non-golfers, basically, it is packed from morning through evening. And this, this has helped eliminate the budget gap that we had from the early COVID-19 challenges in April and May when the course was, well, closed until May. And then in May, it was open on a limited capacity. So again, the, the weather might not be great for people's lawns, although it might be great for Nikki and for water use. It, it has been fantastic for golf. So that's, again, another part of why we're seeing a surge in golf play. And again, it's, it's going to allow the, the course to reinvest in some of the facilities and in some of the deferred capital projects now we're going to be able to do. So we meet on Monday to discuss, again, the committee meeting. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, that's all I have for tonight.
Any, any questions from any of our trustees? Peter?
Yes, trustee Hallwax. Just wondering if there's any update on the fundraising for the clubhouse?
You know, I think I'll have more of that after we meet on Monday. I know that there, that they are still working with Campbell, the provider, to move into the next phase. So I'll be able to update that more at the next meeting and/or I can update you after that we meet on Monday.
Things have been slowed down by the pandemic, obviously, because you couldn't have regular meetings or go visit with people that you want to serve in various capacities. So that's now getting put back together again. But we're still slowed down a lot based on an inability to have normal meetings, coffees, that sort of thing. The next one, question, Peter. Sustainability Task Force, Peter. Besides your questions, fill us in on the important things that are going on to keep the village of Glencoe the most sustainable village in the world.
Right. And while trustee Vrie has led us to some la-dee-dah national accounting awards, we are, we are, we are setting our sights for the galaxy and beyond. So it's nice to hear about these little national things, but we're going big. We're continuing to work with, with the volunteers on the Sustainability Task Force. We will be meeting again Tuesday next week. But I want to mention a couple of things. One is we've organized a library talk with two really outstanding speakers. The topic is the Great Lakes. The outline will be roughly some of the wonders of the Great Lakes and the responsibilities that we have as a Great Lakes community to conserve and manage water in a sustainable way. The two speakers are Cam Davis, who's a former White House executive branch. He was the czar of the Great Lakes during the Obama administration. And Paul May, who is one of the directors of Jawa here in the Northwest Region. That is September 2023. The other announcement I want to make is that we have organized a recycle, donate and recycle drop-off day. This is something we started about a year ago. Not many people recognize or realize that our cleanup days, ball of that material goes to landfill. And what we'd like to do is redirect a lot of those useful and recyclable items and get them out of the landfill stream and into our reuse stream. So on October 10, from 10 a.m. to 1 o'clock, at the Metro, the south side of the Metro parking, we'll be accepting a wide range of materials, the list of which is available on the website, on the village website. So I really want to encourage anybody to bring their materials to the South Metro parking lot for recycling and reuse so that we can minimize the waste that we're... so that we can minimize the waste that we're sending to landfills and increase the opportunities to reuse many of the items which often just get tossed. The event will be COVID, COVID safety practices, so please come with your masks. And you'll pull up your car, we'll have volunteers there to assist in taking things out of the trunk of your car and place them in the proper bin for recycling and reuse. I also want to mention, Stella, that I have also heard a lot of good things. As you know, I'm not a golfer, but I do bump into some of them in town and many of which make a point to point out that you're doing a great job. And many of whom also point out that they appreciate the naturalization and the education points of interest that you have throughout the course. So thank you.
Thank you.
Always. We are, we welcome everybody to participate in our sustainability meetings and to help us make Jokongo the most desirable and sustainable community in the universe. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. Trustee Rubin, can you tell us what's going on with the committee regulations forum?
Yes, we were only able to get one meeting in since our last village board meeting, although we'll be resuming twice a month meetings hereafter. But I would also, I would like to start by thanking President Levin and Sharon and Phil in helping President Levin in getting out what has been universally received as a wonderful response to the request of the forum from our last meetings in terms of speaking out once again against the kinds of activities that some of the folks who've come into our village to chalk or otherwise express their views and have not been well received. And President Levin's statement was lauded. So thank you. Thank you for that. And we even got feedback back from some of the people that were doing the talking, that they truly appreciated. We were joined at our meeting, not just by Amy Mazel, who of course was put on as a member of our forum in the last village meeting, but by both of the appointees, Anees Moses and Hillary Scott. So we basically had three new faces on up on our Zoom screens. And so we spent a lot of time going back through the, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, how we're trying to accomplish it, discussing ideas for how to do that. And to, we got a lot of good ideas. And we also had some written materials that were provided to the committee in advance in terms of how and specifically what we're going to reach out about to various and sundry civic organizations. Sharon, as usual, did her wonderful job of helping guide us and helping differentiate between, you know, the civic and governmental entities that we might reach out to and reminding everybody that as an advisory board to the village, if we're going to reach out to another governmental entity, Evanston, for example, we might want to do it through the village and certainly in coordination with the village rather than on our own. So we made a lot of progress. We have a lot of homework to do for our next meeting. And I think that the educational process that the forum is going to embark on will be furthered. I mean, we've already done some, but be furthered pretty rapidly going forward. Everybody is very anxious that we not be delayed in our mission. So that's in general where things run.
Thank you. All right. The next order of business is our village managers' report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. I've got, I've got a number of items to get through this evening, so I'll apologize in advance. But the overall length of the report may be a little longer than usual. I did want to make one commercial announcement before I get started with the items I have here. And that is to encourage all members of the board, and we will send out invitations for this to attend the budget discussion that the finance committee will have on the 13th of October. That will be when staff presents the first draft of our upcoming fiscal year budget, which will start January 1st. So we do encourage everybody's participation at that meeting. And I will apologize also in advance that it's probably going to be a long meeting, but one that's very important. So on to the items I have prepared for this evening. The first is an update on the pilot sidewalk snow plowing program. As we've been discussing with the board over the last few months, a pilot program for a one-year review of scope of services for sidewalk snow plowing has been under review and is expected to be rolled out this year. This one-year program aims to ascertain better how a reduced scope of services might impact operations and the community and help us to make some decisions on long-range needs from a capital investment standpoint. There were a few open questions the last time we talked through this back in August. And Dave Mau this evening is going to give us a brief update on where things stand at this point. Dave?
Yes, good evening. So following our conversation last with you in August, staff began pushing out the messaging after Labor Day regarding modifications to the program for this upcoming winter. Based on input from the board and further staff review, a modified residential sidewalk removal roadmap has been prepared and posted on the webpage. That map identifies the streets in the community where at least one side of the sidewalk, on at least one side of the street will be cleared as part of the modified program. And three points to keep in mind in the development of that, as you recall, when we talked over the summer, the overlay of that was on the, on the plan included in the active transportation plan. The recommended walking routes to parks and schools, that was part of the ATP. But three focuses of the, of the plan from staff's further development was to continue clearing sidewalk on all the major collector streets and roadways in the community. That includes Dundee, Green Bay Road and Sheridan Road without exception. The plan also, and I would encourage you to pull that up, the plan also clears, intends to clear a pathway from every corner of the village to the downtown, the schools and the parks, and provides pedestrian access with no more than one to two blocks gap of unplowed, un-village cleared sidewalks to get to one of those routes. We include messaging in there urging all residents in the community to partner with the village in this effort to clear snow from public sidewalks, even walks that we have on our, on our removal plan as we talked at length. The timing it takes for us to get there sometimes is delayed. So even having a single shovel path or a snow blower path cleared before we get there is an advantage to helping us to get down to, down to the concrete walk. Since we, since we posted that, we have been fielding some calls and questions, which is good. From those calls and questions, we've developed some FAQs that are now posted on the website that are intended to address some of those recurring questions we've received, including the leadoff on there is why the villages initiating this change, which as the manager has just indicated, was not without purpose. With respect to the comments read earlier this evening in the public comment from Mr. Schmeele on Greenleaf, just some initial reaction to a few of these points for the board and the community's benefit. And staff will gladly follow up directly with Mr. Schmeele and talk in more detail. In taking these in order, the, again, the notion of the routes being based on, just on staff opinion with a vague reference to the active transportation plan, I would remind the board that the school and park routes that were part of the active transportation plan were developed with the input, the direct input of school and park district staff and elected board members. We have regularly for decades coordinated any of our sidewalks, no removal efforts with the school districts. Long before the ATP, they would publish an annual, you know, preferred school walking routes. And we've always tried to mirror that in our efforts. Secondly, if a child needs to walk in the street to get to a school route, the notion that if they're on a street that's not getting plowed, I don't, it's not staff's belief that any pedestrian or children will need to walk in the street at any time. Again, the path to every cleared walk will be relatively short. And then that's assuming that we're able to garner cooperation and support and partnership from residents on those other blocks, which, a lot of which happens today, I would note. Why is the board seeking to save a mere $11,000 a year at the expense of pedestrian safety? Again, as noted previously, I think the cost savings is much more than the annualized savings that was identified in that analysis prepared by staff. As noted, the capital equipment costs in the next three to five years could be greater than $300,000 for the equipment that we use for this work in order to enhance the equipment level. And that's a decision that is going to need input, both from, both from a budget standpoint, but also from an active operational standpoint. Will the village paint pedestrian lanes? Again, on these streets that we're not clearing sidewalk, we don't believe pedestrians will have to move to the street unless they choose to. It's been staff's observations over the years that even with our attempts, as ill-fated as they are at times to clear sidewalk, we still see there's a majority of adults that walk in the pure residential zones, take to the streets anyway, regardless of the condition of the sidewalks. We don't, we don't see that being a significant change. Question on intensifying street lighting. We don't have any plans to modify street lighting. I would remind the board that the current lighting levers were improved with the Comet LED lighting program a few years back. And it would be staff's opinion that lighting levels are at their best in the winter months, when the tree cover is clear and we're dark earlier in the evening, in the daytime. Justifying, justifying plowing sidewalks at the north end of Green Bay Road as opposed to residential areas. And again, we're not, we're not eliminating any residential sidewalk clearing, but accessible sidewalks on these collector roadways, would, staff would argue, is probably the most critical of the streets that we were clearing sidewalk on to keep pedestrians out of the street on those more heavily traveled, higher speed routes like Green Bay and Dundee and Sheridan. With that, that's a brief overview. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Just to add to that, Dave's point, we are going to be sharing both the BAP and those FAQs in tomorrow's e-news. And we'll continue to share that information, drive people back to the village's website on this project. And always happy to answer questions that come up from the community. And that helps us to do a better job overall. So we're glad to get the feedback.
One thing I would...
Yep, Jonathan, sorry.
Sort of stress somewhere in there about it's incumbent on residents to shovel their walks. You know, the comments I've heard from people are that now sidewalks just aren't going to be shoveled. And that's really not the plan. The plan is that everybody shovels their own walks.
We do have, we do have several statements in there about the partnership efforts and even some statements in there about how to help support neighbors who may or may not be able to do it themselves or have the resources to have a service. We will continue to circle back on that messaging point.
Joe, any questions or comments?
I have still...
None for me.
Yes, I'll get to you in a second, Peter. Gail?
No.
Peter?
We skipped Barbara.
It's okay. I don't have any.
I was just thinking that there are, there are programs out there I've read about that's sort of a shared snow blower type thing for the block. There's a number of different models that I've read about. And those examples might be worth mentioning or pointing to. And I suspect that the capital investment of this, what we expect to be several hundred thousand dollars could buy a whole bunch of snow blowers. If you wanted to, I wonder if there's a way to incentivize this kind of community snow blowing. If somebody's willing to store the snow blower and let that be accessible to those in the block. Might be an interesting way to tackle this.
We will attempt not to blow it, but to get it snow cleared. Barbara, did you have any questions or thoughts?
No, none for me. Thanks.
Gary?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Jonathan, anything further?
Nope. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bill?
We'll keep, we'll keep at it and we'll keep you in the loop as this progresses. And hopefully, we're not dealing with snow for a while, since it is still September. And I hope to actually get some fall this year. I wanted to provide also an update relative to some things on our far western extremities. Dundee Road, the segment of roadway between our Western Boundary and Forestway Drive. For the last couple of years, President Levin and the staff have been discussing and working closely with our state legislators and with IDOT to try to achieve some roadway resurfacing on that stretch of road. As we've reported in the past, IDOT does control that segment of Dundee Road. You may recall, a couple of years ago, I had a number of residents in that area who were very frustrated with the roadway conditions. IDOT did do some roadway patching, but overall, the condition of the road remains relatively poor. IDOT did announce us this late, late this past winter that they did intend to resurface this roadway in 2020. The COVID pandemic hit then, and we weren't sure whether or not they were going to be able to move forward with that. And so we were hopeful. In addition, the village has a long-planned sidewalk extension project from the south entrance of the Botanic Garden to Pebblewood Drive. This exists on the north side of Dundee Road. It's a hole in the sidewalk network that was referenced in the active transportation plan that Public Works Director Mao was mentioning a moment ago. And it has been a long sought-after improvement. I'm happy to report that we expect that both projects are going to commence and be complete within the next four weeks or so. We were advised by IDOT just yesterday that they are looking to begin resurfacing efforts next week, late next week. And that while they couldn't commit to an exact date, that that was what they were working toward. So we will continue to gather information from them and we'll share it with the community as it's available. Certainly, that's a very positive effort if it does get done. And we are keeping our fingers crossed on that. The sidewalk installation is a village project that we did have to receive IDOT approval for. We intend, we expect that the installation of that is going to occur either concurrently or shortly after the roadway work is complete. Unfortunately, if we had gotten a little more notice from IDOT, we might have been able to coordinate a little bit differently. But their schedule is not all that flexible. So we're going to do the best we can to not overlap those in a negative way. But I'm just wanted to provide that update to the board. This has been an area of some concern in the village. And so we're glad to see these projects move forward. We'll get information up on the village's website and share it in e-news as we can. And certainly look forward to this being completed. I wanted to speak for a moment... Um, I wanted to speak for a moment, um, and actually have, uh, Management Analyst Jordan Lester provide a report this evening, uh, relative to Halloween. Um, obviously, the COVID pandemic has impacted many of the events here in the community, um, over the last year or so. Looking ahead to Halloween, uh, which is coming up, uh, in about a month and a half, there have been questions that have started to be asked of Villa, of the village, um, as to what to expect here in 2020. Um, as I mentioned, Jordan has been, um, heading up the staff effort on research of this, and so I've asked her to provide a brief update to you this evening on our recommendations. Jordan?
Uh, thank you, Manager Crowley. Um, as he had mentioned, the month of October is rapidly drawing near, and staff is evaluating the implications of having Halloween trick-or-treating in 2020, given the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Um, as a bit of context, October 31st falls on a Saturday this year, and in normal years, uh, Glencoe's trick-or-treating would take place over the span of four hours from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. So we have looked at what our neighboring communities have released. I will say not a, not a large number of communities have released information, but, uh, neighboring communities of Highland Park, Deerfield, Northbrook, and Womet have already indicated that they will be permitting trick-or-treating, um, in some fashion, but it's, it's key to note that they're not necessarily encouraging residents to participate. They're not encouraging nor discouraging, um, which seems to be a common theme, um, uh, in, in our area. So with the communities that have indicated that they will be permitting trick-or-treating in some formats, they have released COVID-19 safety guidelines, um, to promote a safe experience for families choosing to participate, as well as a safe experience for families who are choosing not to participate this year. So based on the information that we have seen from other communities, um, Glencoe Village staff recommends following a similar approach, and we've developed a general, several general guidelines for 2020 Halloween, um, that once refined and following, um, any input the board may have this evening, we will publish on the villagers' website, social media, our weekly, um, e-news, and every other channel we can in the coming days. Um, but as I mentioned, if the board has any, um, concerns with our, with staff's recommended approach, we definitely welcome them this evening. Uh, just for the benefit of the group, I'm going to pop open, um, a slide, um, one moment, please, and, uh, please let me know when you can see it.
We can see it.
Okay, perfect. Um... Okay. So here's just the recommended trick-or-treat, um, guidelines that staff has, uh, for families that do wish to participate. We recommend keeping the normal four-hour period on Saturday, October 31st, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. We will share messaging with the community, um, of course, reiterating, um, do not participate in trick-or-treating if you're feeling unwell, if you are waiting COVID-19 test results, if you've recently returned from a travel hotspot state that the, that Cook County has on their list, or if you know that you've been exposed to a confirmed COVID-19, confirmed positive COVID-19 case. Similarly to that, face masks, we're going to reiterate the use of face masks, um, by all participants over the age of two, including those that, um, are choosing to hand out treats. Um, and, um, with that, social distancing should always be maintained, emphasizing small groups, um, families only, not, um, neighborhoods going together. Um, and then for those that are approaching homes, wait until, um, the group in front of you is, is done trick-or-treating, um, to then approach the home. So our next set, um, what we've seen in other communities is that to help trick-or-treaters determine which houses are welcoming trick-or-treaters, um, we intend to create a, a sign that will be available on the village's website that folks can download and print off at home, that, um, you can put on your window either saying, yes, we are welcoming trick-or-treaters this year, or no, we are not welcoming trick-or-treaters. Um, in, in addition to the normal light, um, put the lights on your porch, and we want to have an extra bit of, um, messaging that folks can have to either, um, encourage or, um, say, hey, we're not feeling comfortable this year. Um, we will also recommend, um, that home should consider non-food treats, that some parents may be able to sanitize at home for an extra layer of safety. Um, some ideas are stickers, um, or, or little erasers, or, or pencils, or anything that we can, um, have hands sanitizer and disinfecting wipes, um, to reduce any possible, um, any possible fears there. And then last but not least, as we have with every single year, the Public Safety Department has a great, um, set of recommendations for, um, both drivers and being my, uh, being mindful of the larger numbers of children and families that are going to be out and about, um, on, on Halloween, um, and we'll continue to reiterate, um, that messaging, um, as with every year. So those are just our general, um, recommended guidelines. Um, like I said, if the board has any concerns with staff's recommended approach, I would be happy to hear them, and then we can move forward with those.
Anyone have any suggestions? Okay.
Thank you.
I just, I have one, one question. I don't recall from, I, I, I thought, um, that looked very appropriate. Uh, thank you for looking those out. Um, my only question I don't recall from prior years is, um, is there anything we can do to encourage, um, people to wear clothing so that it is easier to see them when they are crossing streets? I, I remember that being a problem. I don't remember if we've been able to address it.
That's a great, uh, question, Trustee Miller. In our, um, non-pandemic year messaging, we do encourage, uh, families to incorporate, um, fluorescent or bright costumes, particularly because as we get into the fall, it does get darker earlier in the evenings. Um, as I mentioned, I don't know all of them off the top of my head, but we do encourage, um, costumes that have, um, either lights or, or carrying a flashlight, um, to, to show that, um, there are children or folks walking on the sidewalks and, um, crossing, um, roadways. That, that's a great idea, and something we will continue to reiterate.
Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. All right.
We will continue then, um, and begin the messaging process, um, on that effort, and appreciate your, um, uh, your, uh, agreeing with our, our recommendations. Um, along the lines, continuing, uh, along the lines of, of discussion of, of events, um, the Light the Lights event is, uh, is scheduled at the end of November. As we have with other large-scale special events typically held throughout the year, staff has been considering how or if we should move forward with Light the Lights for 2020. The health and well-being of the public, uh, in any public event that would encourage a crowd to gather has been our primary concern since the outset of the pandemic and led to the cancellation of Memorial Day and Fourth of July, uh, events this year. Um, as you'll recall, in the past two years, Light the Lights has grown from just a holiday lighting ceremony to include a full evening event on the Friday after Thanksgiving, including a wine walk, trackless train, carolers, pictures with Santa, and other festive components. Um, we don't believe that, given the current restrictions and guidelines, that the village can provide those events this year in a way that does protect the health and well-being of the public. Um, it's just simply unsafe to try to, um, facilitate some of that, uh, as we have in the past. Likewise, with the ceremonial tree lighting ceremony, the village, uh, would have to work to create safe viewing zones, um, and then work to enforce, um, mask-wearing, and attempt to keep crowd sizes below 50 to meet state requirements. Um, all of that is a pretty difficult process to try to facilitate, and one that would likely result in a less-than-ideal experience for everyone who would participate. Um, therefore, while it's not preferred to do so, um, I'm proposing that the traditional Light the Lights events be canceled this year. Um, while that is, uh, sounds very Grinch-like, uh, for me to say out loud, um, I think there are too many factors at play, uh, to make this event, uh, a safe one. However, I will say, we do still have plans to, uh, light the trees in our downtown, um, and we would like to work on ways for the community to celebrate the holiday season safely, um, including something akin to a car parade, uh, or shopping incentives, and other opportunities where we can partner with the Chamber, with the Park District, uh, or with other community partners to find ways for people to enjoy the holidays together. Um, given the amount of time that it takes to plan events like this, uh, even if we were to proceed with a, um, a scaled-back, uh, version, um, where I mentioned before about, you know, creating those safe viewing zones, um, it's going to take some time. So that's why I wanted to share this with you this evening, get any feedback that you have, um, and then we can move forward, uh, once, uh, once we have that information. But it is our recommendation that we move away from any in-person events, um, in November, and, uh, that we, um, we look to other, uh, other ways to celebrate.
Joe, any comments or questions?
Uh, my comments, I think it's sad, but I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's been, yeah, something in that the community really looks forward to, but given the circumstances, I would agree with the staff that it's, given the amount of extra hurdles to pull an already, uh, fairly complex or event off, that, that the best thing to do would be to cancel it and look for another, different way to, uh, to hold a venue to involve the community.
Thank you, Joe. Gail, any questions or comments?
I also agree with the decision. I was involved in the last couple of years with the Light the Lights, and I think it's been done really well, and I think doing anything that is scaled back would not end up being a positive experience for the community. So I, I think it is the right decision, uh, not to pursue it this year, and potentially, um, do some great lighting of, of downtown and some great shopping incentives for our business community, and, uh, the car parade sounds like an interesting idea I hadn't heard before. Um, but I think it just needs to be different this year, and we can go back and have next year have, have a really spectacular Light the Lights.
Barbara, any, uh, questions or comments?
Um, yeah, it's, um, it, it's certainly the right decision, and it, it is, it is really unfortunate that we have to do it. Um, I guess I just, um, I hope that we'll, uh, we'll keep our thinking caps on, um, and see what else we can come up with that might be a way, a safe way of the community celebrating together. Um, you know, whether it's, um, you know, at a certain time, everybody goes outside, or, um, you know, something like the bear hunt, uh, that, that we had at the beginning of the pandemic. Um, find, find community ways that people can have shared experiences.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, perhaps what we can do is instead of having a Christmas tree, we could have a huge, uh, Grinch, COVID-19 Grinch that we love, uh, downtown. Peter, any thoughts or comments?
I agree with the staff recommendations. Thank you for the thought that you guys put into it. I, I also agree with Trustee Miller that we really do, um, we really should keep our creative juices going and think about how we can create the shared experience in the winter, uh, season. So whether it's Christmas, let's say, or any other kind of, um, community event, activity, some kind of solidarity, that sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, Peter. Um, Gary, any, uh, comments or questions?
Uh, just that, um, sadly, I agree with what's just been said by, by the other folks, so.
Thank you. Uh, Jonathan?
Um, I also agree with everyone, um, unfortunately. Thanks.
Thank you. Back, back to you, Phil.
Thank you. Yeah, we will, we will now, um, we'll work through some messaging, and we will keep our thinking caps on. We've got a couple of ideas that were bouncing around, and, and we'll, we're going to continue to work with the Chamber and others to try to, um, to create some experiences as possible. Um, I wanted to just provide one more reminder. Uh, this is the last village board meeting, um, before the census deadline, uh, arrives on September 30th. It was moved up a month this year. Um, so we are making sure to encourage that everyone, um, does respond to the 2020 census. As of today, we still have just under 18% of the community that have not yet responded to the census. Um, so we're hoping that, uh, people still do, uh, take just a few minutes. It, it's as few as 10 minutes, uh, to make a difference, uh, here in Glencoe by providing, um, by making sure that we have what we, uh, the representation so that we are able to receive federal dollars and, and other critical resources. Um, you can respond online, over the phone, or by mail, and all of that information is at www.2020census.gov. It's also linked off of the village's website. So, um, I'm hopeful that we can get to that 100% and, um, get everybody counted in the next couple of weeks. Um, last, but certainly not least, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, um, I wanted to take, um, a few minutes here to acknowledge something. Um, we have a significant milestone of, uh, one of our staff members. Um, you may not recognize the young man in front of you, um, but today is Dave Mao's, uh, 30th ann- today is actually Dave Mao's 30th anniversary with the village. Um, just to give you a little bit of, of Dave's history. So he, he grew up in Park Ridge. Um, he started with us, uh, on September 17th, 1990, as the Assistant Village Engineer. Um, and after, and that came after a move back to Chicago. He had been down in Texas for a few years, um, working in the private sector. Dave has been serving as Public Works Director for, um, the last 24 years. He was, he was promoted to that role in 1996. Um, I wanted to say a few things about Dave, uh, because he, he, he's not the kind of person that's ever going to say these things about himself, for sure. Um, but he deserves to hear them out loud. Uh, there are some people, uh, that just become synonymous with being the best, and, uh, Dave is one of those people. Uh, to say that in his time here, Dave has had a positive influence on the village is akin to acknowledging that Michael Jordan had a positive impact on the Chicago Bulls. Dave is a consummate professional, immensely dedicated, and always reliable. He works as hard as anyone, sometimes seven days a week, in service to this community, exemplifying servant leadership, uh, and setting the bar for customer service exceptionally high. Regardless of the crisis or celebration, Dave is often the first one in and the last one out. And in the last 30 years, there is likely no one on staff that has been involved in more village initiatives, be they stormwater projects, streetscape improvements, water main replacements, village hall renovations, I think he's done two of them, uh, subdivision public hearings, or internal staff planning meetings. Dave has literally been there for all of it, and deserves a great deal of credit for the success of many of these initiatives. There's no doubt, uh, that his service has made this community a better place and continues to do so every day. Uh, in addition to his technical know-how and dedication to the job, Dave is also a kind-hearted and devoted husband, father, son, and friend. He lights up the room with his humor and serves as a support to our entire team through the very best and worst of times, which we've experienced in the last few months. Um, for me, it's a true honor to, uh, have the opportunity to work with him every day. Um, and I know you'll all join me in congratulating him on this great accomplishment and adulating him, or, uh, providing the adulation for the many things he will continue to do for the next 30 years that he works with the village. So, um, thank you, Dave, for, uh, what you've done. We look forward to, to what you will continue to do for the village. Um, and this picture was too good not to share. And with that, I have, I have nothing further. I, I don't think I could top, top anything else, uh, on my report than that.
Thank you.
You're here.
I agree with all that was said. Appreciate your time and effort, Phil.
Not often that we get, we actually have an anniversary date of this magnitude on the actual day of the board meeting, so we, we weren't going to let that one fly, fly.
I, I would just want to thank Phil and, and the members of the staff that I've had the pleasure of working with, and, and the, the many, uh, village board, uh, boards that I've served, uh, that I just, I appreciate every day that I work here, and I would just note for the record that the, the only thing that Michael Jordan and I have in common is our gender.
You're almost as tall as him, maybe. That is my report this evening, Mr. President. Thank you. Did we lose the village president? I don't see him on the screen.
We lost the village president.
You did.
He was overwhelmed by Dave's greatness.
Steve, thoughts? Should we try to, should we take a pause here?
You may. There, there are provisions when the village president is incapacitated or is out, but I don't think that that's the case. I, I would recommend maybe we take a pause and, and see if we can get back or text him.
Yeah, I just got a text message that he's unable to reconnect.
Oh, well, maybe incapacitated then.
He may have, he may have to call in. So if, if we can take one, one moment, that would be great.
Larry, I see you've dialed in. You should be able to unmute yourself.
I think you have to hit star six.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Where are we at? Have, have you finished census reminder?
We are, we are at the village president's report.
Okay. Here is my report. The current declaration of emergency that we have is set to expire at the adjournment of tonight's meeting. It is recommended that the declaration's expiration be extended. May I have a motion to approve the extension until the adjournment of our next regular, special, or emergency meeting of our Board of Trustees?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Okay. Our next order of business is consideration, let's see what we have here. Next order of business that I have on my agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending section 10A15 of the Village Code, Community Relations Forum Organization and Membership Provisions to permit increased membership for the community forum, et cetera. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a roll call, please.
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
President Levin, if you'd like to, you can take the next three appointments together on one roll call.
Excellent. Let me see in a minute if I can get my video going again. I think I'm back up.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
We have three appointments that are before us tonight. The first is the reappointment of Andrew Burglin to another term on the Public Safety Commission. The next is the appointment Anas Moses to the Community Relations Forum and also the appointment of Hillary Scott to the Community Relations Forum. May I have a motion to confirm those appointments, please?
So moved.
May I have a roll call, please?
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller. Rusty Miller, you're muted. Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Excellent. Our next order of business is a consideration of a proclamation declaring September 2020 as Suicide Prevention Month in the village of Glencoe. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next regular village board meeting is currently scheduled for Thursday, October 15th, 2020. Our next order of business is consideration of consent agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that any trustee wishes to have taken off or to discuss before I ask the village manager to read the items on the agenda? If not, Phil, would you read the items on the agenda, please, so that we know what's before us?
Certainly. The first item, item A, is August 2020 Village Treasurer, Treasurer's Report and Glencoe Golf Club Financial Report. Item B, August 2020 Check Register for the Village of Glencoe and Glencoe Golf Club. Item C, Ratification of the August 2020 Early Check Register List. Item D, Consideration of a Resolution Approving Updates to the Investment Policy and Investment Portfolio for the Village of Glencoe. Item E, Consideration of a Resolution Approving Modifications to the Purchasing Policy to Include the Federally Funded Procurement Policy. Item F, Consideration of a Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement for Coronavirus Relief Funds with Cook County. Item G, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing Village Participation in a Cost Sharing Agreement with the Glencoe Park District for the Water Plant Beach Access Ramp Retaining Wall Repairs. Item H, Consideration of a Resolution for Potential Zoning Code Amendments to Allow Multiple Cooking Arrangements in Single Family Dwellings. And item I, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of a Replacement Source Capture Vehicle Exhaust System. That concludes the, the consent agenda list. President Levin.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
I have a roll call, please.
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Okay, our next order of business is a public hearing regarding the consideration of amendments to the Village of Glencoe's Plan of Operation and Governance for its Electricity Aggregation Program. I will now open the hearing and management analyst Lester, is there any comments that were emailed in with respect to people wishing to be heard during the public hearing?
President Levin, we did not receive any public comments pertaining to this public hearing.
Okay. Could I have you, Jordan and Megan Olson present the issues for the public hearing?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, President Levin, and good evening trustees. As discussed during the July 16th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting, the village, along with all other members, community members of the North Shore Electricity Aggregation Consortium, is in the process of exploring a new electric aggregation concept as a possibility for village financial savings. This concept would require an amendment to the Plan of Governance and Operations, otherwise known as the POGO. To adopt an amendment to the POGO, the village must hold two public hearings pursuant to the Illinois Power Agency Act. This evening is the first public hearing and the second will take place during the village's board October 15th meeting. No action is necessary at this meeting. As management analyst Jordan Lester reported on July 16th, under this concept, a portion of the village's residential and small commercial customers would be offered electric service from an alternative electric supplier that would be equal to the COMED rate. The cost savings in providing electricity to these residents and businesses from the alternative provider would be given to the village through the form of grant funding. The village would then have the opportunity to utilize the resulting funding for a variety of purposes, such as sustainability initiatives and/or the purchase of renewable energy credits. Later this fall, consortium intends to release a request for proposals for electricity aggregation procurement. As this specific aggregation concept was not originally contemplated when the village entered into the consortium and adopted a plan of governance and operations for the POGO in 12, in 2012, the village must amend its POGO by ordinance before accepting any bid for a new aggregation concept. Please note that the village is not legally obligated to accept any future RFP bid. I also want to address one of the questions that was posed at the July Committee of the Whole Meeting regarding this program. Trustee Rubin asked if residents were being asked to opt into an alternative electric provider and subsequently forego the benefits that they would have received if they pursued a community solar subscription. After seeking clarification, we learned that the RFP would be structured in a way that any residents who have opted into the program may opt out at any time and that the contractor would be required to facilitate the process of residents changing back over to COMED so that the customer may pursue community solar as they wish. Pursuant to the Illinois Power Agency Act, as noted earlier, the village must hold two public hearings before adopting any POGO amendment. This evening is the first public hearing and the second will play, place during next month. No action is necessary at this evening. At this time, we welcome any questions.
Are there any questions or comments at this stage as opposed to when we get to the final consideration? And I'll start with Joe. Any questions or comments at this point? Gail, any question or comments at this point?
No.
Barbara?
None for me.
Peter?
I must have missed it. Often times when we use the term alternative energy supplier, we're thinking about renewable energy, lower carbon sources. We don't specifically just that it is an alternative. Is that the case here?
It could be. I think it depends on what we want to specify and what the RFP comes back with. So it very well could be, it also could be other more traditional types of energy.
And we'll, we'll have more information on all of that, obviously, after the next public hearing, when we actually consider what to do. But we will, we will thus be able to respond realistically then. Gary, any questions or comments?
No, but thank you, Megan, for getting, for answering my prior question. I appreciate it.
Jonathan?
No questions.
Okay. If, at this stage, since there's no further action required, may I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Before we close, do we need to check to see if there were public comments?
Not the meeting, just to close the, the hearing is what I'm calling it. Motion to close the hearing with regard to our electric aggregation program.
Yeah, President, clarified, trustee Mulvaney, President Levin asked for that early, at the beginning of the, of a public hearing.
We determined there were no comments.
No comments received.
So moved.
I have a roll call, please.
Just one second, we've got to let Joe, Rusty Hallwax, back in. He is back, I guess.
I think I'm back.
You are, you are. Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next matter is consideration of an ordinance providing for the issuance of approximately 7,200,000 general obligation refunding bond series 2020A of the Village of Glencoe, Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said village provided for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the to pay the principal and interest, and authorizing sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. And Nikki is going to go through a discussion of this and tell us how we've saved more than $400,000 according to today's auction for our residents on this.
Thank you, President Levin. As the Board will recall from prior discussions, staff has been working with the Village's Financial Advisor, Mark Jaratina, from Spear Financial. Mark is joining us this evening. But just a quick recap of how we got here today. As part of a regular analysis of the Village's outstanding debt portfolio, we did identify the opportunity to refund or refinance the outstanding issue of General Obligation Bond 2012A. The original issue was for about $8.5 million. It was issued for capital projects, and there's approximately $7 million in principal remaining on the issue, so certainly backloaded in the original structure. The average coupon in the original bond issue was 2.2%. And when we originally looked at this about a month or two ago, the potential savings was originally projected at about $300,000. So we were fortunate, the market gods were smiling on us today to, and I will turn it over to Mark in a moment, to go over the exact results. But lastly, and importantly, this does qualify as what we refer to as a bank-qualified issue. Typically, this requires that a municipality issue less than $10 million, $10 million per year. Based off of a conversation that we had with the Finance Committee last month, we were able to, what's called deem-designate, which is essentially to segregate this issue out so that it would qualify for bank qualification, which allowed us to qualify for lower interest rates. And at this point, I will turn it over to Mark to go over the bond sale results from today.
Thanks, Nikki, and good evening to the Board members. This morning, we did hold an auction for the sale of the Village's Series 2028 Bonds, and the market that we seized was very positive. We received a total of 53 bids from 10 different bidders, and the winning bidder ended up being Hilltop Securities with a 0.61% interest rate over seven years. Interest rates continue to be near record lows, especially short-term rates, so this is a great time to refinance outstanding 2012A bonds. During this process, we also affirmed the Village's outstanding AAA bond rating, which helped with the low interest rate. As Nikki mentioned, when we started this process, we were anticipating right around $300,000 in debt service savings. Today, we realized about $406,000 of debt service savings, so great news. We thought the process went very well, and we would recommend this little bid by Hilltop Securities be accepted. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And Mark, if you don't mind, if I can just add on to what Mark said, the savings, the approximately $406,000 that we will be recognizing over the rest of the term of the bond, which is seven years, will be passed on to our residents through property tax savings. So that will decrease the amount of dollars that needs to be levied by the Village for the debt service levy, and in turn, that will decrease the property taxes required by the residents. So definitely a good news story today.
I had a quick question. What, if any, effect does the notion that the paramount was adjusted?
It's adjusted just so we can get into that bank qualified, as Nikki mentioned. Lots of times, it gets adjusted. We keep the same interest rates, we just change the maturity schedule a little bit.
So the entire series was refinanced? It's not like the, the Village, I just want to clarify, the Village isn't reaching into their pocket paying off a piece of these bonds from separate funds.
Correct, yes.
Point of fact, it's all of the proceeds necessary to refinance this bond series is coming from the new bond series.
That is correct, yes.
That, that's just the point. I wanted to make sure. I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with that concept of changing the paramounts. Thank you. Well, and thank you for a great of, of pointing out that we ought to take a look at this in the first place, and then for doing such a good job on the execution. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I would say an outstanding job. Any other comments or questions, Jonathan?
None for me.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, I would like a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Okay. Our next order of business is consideration of a resolution authorizing the Village Manager to execute a license agreement with Hometown Coffee and Juice LLC and Beal Properties, 700 Burnham Avenue, for the encroachment of temporary outdoor structures onto the Village right away. Do I have any questions or comments? Joe?
No questions or comments.
Gail?
No, I don't.
Barbara Miller, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Peter Mulvaney? Okay. Jonathan Vry? No questions or comments?
None for me.
All right, may I have a?
My, excuse me, my, my only question or comment, Mike, it's a comment, is simply to possibly modify the motion to allow for an earlier date to take effect, if that would be helpful to the business, and it's the Village Manager decides it's in the best interest.
I think that's an excellent amendment for the motion. May I have a, a motion to do so with the change that was suggested?
You could actually ask the mover and seconder, President Levin, if they would accept that.
Did we have a seconder?
Second and I accept it.
Okay.
All right. With that, since we have a motion and a second, then I would ask for a roll call.
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Okay. Management Analyst Lester, were there any public comments that were received during the meeting, not on the subject of the hearing that we haven't heard yet?
No, President Levin, we did not receive any public comment.
Thank you. Given that, I think we've gotten through our full agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Are we going in a closed session, or are we?
No, because we did, we did that during the?
Oh, because I missed it, okay.
All right. We've got a motion that something that went up.
We do, yes.
Second, Joe.
May I have a roll call, please?
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for your participation and all the time that you spent this evening. And I urge everyone to attend our Finance Committee meeting next month, because we'll be covering a great deal having to do with our consideration of our budget for the calendar year to follow. Thank you. We stand adjourned.
Thanks.